Here.
Nate?
Here.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
John?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Mayor's excuse. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion, I got a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public input, this is a time and place for discussion of items not already on the agenda. I do one. Right now, the history center is down in an air conditioner. And I think they said their estimated cost is $10,000 for that, Connie?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand. Um, I don't know. You know, it seems like whenever any of our buildings go out of something, whether it's at the library or the community center or the shop, we seem to always find the money for it. You know, I don't know if we want to maybe pay for half of it, or, I mean, it's, I don't know how they're going to come up with $11,000 to pay for this. So, something to think about, maybe put on the agenda for the next council meeting to talk about it. Anybody else? All right. Five A, home rule proclamation.
Um, this year is the 50th anniversary for a home rule, and the Iowa League of Cities is really promoting this. They wanted to get each city in Iowa to do a proclamation for home rules. So, I thought we'd participate in that also. So, this is supposed to be read by the mayor. Would you like it done?
Go ahead.
Whereas, home rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal governments in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level where decisions are made closest to the people they impact and can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, and concerns in order to better serve taxpayers. Whereas, the city of Lisbon supports home rule and the powers it provides to make local decisions that best reflect the residents of our community. Whereas, the citizens of Iowa approve the adoption of home rule in the constitution of Iowa on November 5th, 1968. Whereas, this is the 50th year of municipal home rule in Iowa. Whereas, home rule continues to be vital to the health and prosperity of all cities in Iowa. Now therefore, I, Mayor Burl O'Connor, mayor of Lisbon, Iowa, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of municipal home rule in Iowa and proudly support its continued authority. Good job.
All right. Bill hearing by Christine Heim, I use my name, Heim, regarding a vicious animal complaint. Do you want to come up to the mic, please? Yep.
My name is Christina Heim, I live at 421 East Market Street, where our family died, Rupert lives. And my death has been occurring. This occurred about two months ago, April 27th, I believe. An officer knocked on the front door. I had opened the inside. Front door and Rupert was, he was in front of me. The officer had reached for my screen door, which Rupert had got out and bit his hand because he was provoked, and the officer had his hand out, and Rupert had came up and bit him. According to the city ordinance, it appears Rupert wouldn't be deemed vicious since he was provoked and Rupert was listening to our commands, and he didn't keep biting or attacking the officer, and he didn't go after the officer either. I was told to quarantine Rupert for 10 days, to which I did with no issues. Rupert had never bit anyone before I came to him today. Rupert's always there when I enter the front door to someone, and he's never bit anyone. We've had kids come up to our door, male curriers come up, taken for foster out of town. There's been no issues or complaints that I have heard. I work from home every day, and my desk is right next to the front window, and I can see that Rupert, if he doesn't attempt to bite or attack anyone, that comes up to our door when he's outside. I have spoke to a vet about Rupert being owner protective, and they said that they're not vicious, they just, they bite when they're provoked or threatened, and that they often draw a bit and can be treated. I feel it would not be appropriate of remaining in this situation to call our dog, to destroy or remove, due to his one isolated instance. And I got Mikaela Foley, she was also there. She was the test person.
Hi, my name's Mikael, I am her daughter. Rupert is technically me and my eight-year-old sister's dog. We have both raised Rupert since Peyton was about five years old. I was there when I had the incident. What had happened was, we were all just listening to some music on our TV, and I was sitting on my couch, that was by the window, and my mom was sitting across from me. And I had seen a flashlight shine in the window at my face. And I told my mom right away that someone was at the door. And we had heard another knock, which had really provoked Rupert because he had no idea who was there, and he is very protective. My mom had went to open the front door, and the police officer was reaching to open up the screen door, and that is when Rupert pushed out and bit him. Rupert had stopped biting after he knew that he was not a threat. After that, I had went outside to talk to the officers about the situation, and he had shown me where he got bit, which was on the side of his wrist, instead of on his arm. What I had seen was a little mark with some torn skin, but I didn't see the blood. Then he had proceeded to tell me that there was a noise complaint, which we've had many birthday parties and family events with much louder music than our TV, and this was our first noise complaint, which was strange because I know the neighbors pretty well, and I also work with my next-door neighbor, she works at the LCC daycare. He had then proceeded to tell me I have to get rid of my dog, and I then explained how terribly sorry I was and how he is owner protective. And he had interrupted and said I had, that he didn't care and that I needed to get rid of him. I was so distraught and devastated at that point because he had no power or right to tell me to get rid of my dog. And all the years, um, sorry, Rupert hasn't appeared, he has not, not one incident has he bit or attacked anyone. Like I mentioned before, I do work at the LCC here in Lisbon for about six years now, and often have kids stop by and say hi to me, and not one time has there been a problem. I had made a video, it's like five minutes long, it just proves that Rupert is a vicious dog, I couldn't show it.
Do you guys know that we saw the video of the night that the officer came to the door? Do you know that we've seen that video?
Yeah, I saw the YouTube video of a bull meeting.
I don't know about YouTube, but we saw the video of the officer knocking on the door and the dog.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that we saw that.
Yeah.
Rick, you got anything to say?
No, I was following the code. I was following the city code.
You got anything to say? I mean, according to our code, and what I seen on the video was, I didn't see Frank or Jeff open the door, I seen, once that door was open, I seen the dog come out and bite him. I mean, and it's very, very hard for us to sit up here and do something like this, but we have to think of the next time, it could be a lot worse. I mean, and according to our code, I mean, we have zero tolerance. I mean, it's, we got rid of one out by the cemetery, and it was a little shizitzu. I mean, it bit somebody, I mean, it's zero tolerance. I mean, we just, I mean, according to our code, I mean, the code of Lisbon is the law of Lisbon, I mean, we got to follow the law. I mean, it's just like a police officer has their rules, I mean, when we drive a car, we've got to follow laws, that's how we got to enact on this. So, that's my opinion.
And I will say to you, I know that you say that your desk is right by the window and you can see the door and all that kind of stuff, but I have walked my dog past your yard before, and if it was not for that invisible fence and the collar that you guys have, there is no doubt in my mind that your dog would have attacked probably myself and our dog. So, I understand that you might not think it's vicious, and it probably isn't to any of you, but we don't know what is going to be the next thing that provokes it or the next thing that it thinks that one of you is in danger. And if that happens to be somebody's child riding their bike and they honk a horn or something like that, we have no idea what's going to provoke the dog. And that's unfortunate for everybody in here, because Doug's right, we don't like to have to do this kind of stuff, but that is the law.
Our attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we make exceptions and the dog bites a second person and there's a lawsuit, I would guess the city would be listed on that lawsuit too for not enforcing our code.
But the city has exposed the city potential litigation if that were to happen.
I too saw the video during the council meeting, and I am a dog lover, but in this matter, my decision is no different than the decision I formulated after seeing that video.
And like we said, we've had to make this very difficult decision in the past for a matter of consistency, we don't want to, we, you know, can't set a precedence. So unfortunately, you know, it's, we do have to follow the law.
Council, and I reviewed the body cam of the officer as well, and my associate, we both looked at it together, and I know we looked at it at least three times, about four times, because we were looking for that, whether or not the officer somehow provoked your dog. And we both concluded that we didn't believe that the officer opened the screen door, that the homeowner opened the screen door, and then the dog busted out. I don't think the officer did anything to buy mine to provoke the dog to jump out and do what it did. Because to me, the key word was unprovoked in the code. And the officer would have opened the door, stuck his head in the door screaming and yelling, we might have a different conclusion here, but when I looked at it, me and the officer did not provoke the animal. Like you all, I'm a dog lover too, and take these situations life harder. But I do worry about the consistency of applying the code. It is a safety and health issue, whether it's the officer or somebody else, the neighborhood. So, I can answer any questions as far as, I think, interpretation of code or anything like that.
So, what's the next step if we would vote to have the dog removed from city limits?
We're not telling them they have to have it put down, we're just telling them it can no longer be in the city limits of Lisbon.
Exactly.
Exactly. I'm trying to remember, Rick, how many days to handle?
We, normally it'd be 10 days.
Okay.
And is that 10 days from tonight, or is that 10 days from when we initially ruled on that?
Be from tonight.
The last, you're going to have to re-vote.
Okay.
Because the last, these votes have to take out of this, so.
Okay.
It could be 10 days from whatever decision you make tonight.
I need a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we uphold the initial ruling that the dog be removed from the city limits.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, aye. So, do we give paperwork that says it's got to be on Lisbon by a certain time?
This is what, yeah, this is what.
Rick, do that.
Usually when we did that, also, we, they had their dog license.
Okay.
And she came up with the license the next day, if there's any way that she can be reimbursed for that.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. Discussing impossible action for request of Richard Nosson regarding garbage fees. Richard?
I have a long request from the V, which I have been 25 years with garbage. If I give you a copy of the letter I have received from the city 25 years ago.
Thank you.
Highlighted part on the second page.
Do it, Mr. President.
And I was interested to hear this, as well as being virtually told, I will no longer have garbage pickup or be able to have it as long as I own the house.
So, when I read this, I don't, maybe I'm reading it wrong, so somebody tell me. I read that you had a delinquent bill, and so they suspended your service?
I did not.
You did not?
I never had a garbage pickup, beginning with period, ever.
That was my interpretation when I read it also. It appeared that he had been suspended for non-payment.
This is before my time, why would the city suspend anybody's garbage service? The city's code required all residential property owners to be serviced by garbage collection.
Well, you would if they didn't pay their bill, I guess, maybe.
No, no, I get that, I mean, you suspend.
But we wouldn't just.
You put a lien on their property, not just them paying for it. Yeah, I don't understand that either.
But that's part of the water bill too, so wouldn't we, if it wasn't fully paid, you'd suspend their.
Their water.
Water and turn their water off.
Never had garbage pickup, I've never been late paying the water bill. What do you do with your garbage? And I had pickup, we have a county landfill, we're cleaning out all the sand and whatever, garbage fed it for three, three months. I go that way, as far as papers, whatever, I trade all that. I have a camper, starts to get a bonfire in my camper.
What's our code, what's our code say on garbage? Is it all residential property owners required to have?
Curbside.
Curbside.
Yeah.
That's our code, isn't it?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, 25 years, never, ever had, never. I feel that I could still be saying what the letter, if don't go by, by what I was told and pissed 25 years ago. And maybe you guys can tell, I'll make something one day, and the next day, change it.
Well, I think we're sitting in the same situation we just were with the dog thing. We have to follow the code, and the code says that everybody within the city limits has to pay for their garbage and have curbside pickup. In my mind, as I'm reading this, I feel like, I guess you got lucky for 25 years, you didn't have to pay for garbage for 25 years, and they're not going to come back on you and make you pay it up.
Why would I, yeah, just like you, at that time?
Well, I don't know, because I wasn't here at that time either, but I would say that there must have been some type of a passed due bill that did not get paid in a timely manner.
On to me, and this, by the way, is the first time I've read this. It says it closes a copy of chapter 106.06, article 3, which is, which is delinquent accounts. So, the only reason I can survive that this letter was sent, the account was delinquent.
Correct. I agree.
The only reason was at that time, was I had three questions, and everybody asked me, and I had a discussion with the council members at the time.
Mr. Nosson, were you being charged for garbage collection before?
Never.
Were you being charged for garbage collection before you got this letter?
No.
Yeah, but then why did this letter be sent to you, do you know?
Because all of a sudden, I started charging you for garbage? I don't have garbage.
Okay, but the letter doesn't say that it's going to start charging you for garbage, that's why, that's why I'm confused.
26 years ago, did you pay for garbage in the city limits of Lisbon?
Pardon me?
26 years ago?
25 years.
No, 26 years ago, did you?
26 years ago, I did not, no.
I think it's a mute subject, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
Well, here's my, here's my interpretation. I mean, who knows what the utility part, what this was for, just based on what I'm seeing in front of me, it hadn't have been sent because of the code, the county issue. Regardless, the code still mandates that all residential property owners be assessed a garbage fee, whether they use it or not. And I don't think, I don't think there's any in the code, correct me if I'm wrong, that says unless you conclude that you're taking your garbage to the landfill on your own.
We don't allow them to opt out.
Right, there's no opt out, like, that I'm aware. So, you've had a good deal served.
You told me that the city can send me a letter, say now I'm never out, getting matters yet, but again, if I wanted to. And so, I'm saying, 25 years, and now all of a sudden, I started charging you for, never had you.
Well, to me, this is nothing more than changing a code, or knowing, or our code wasn't in place before, and then it's brought back in, everyone still has to comply. So, for whatever reason, you've had a pretty good deal. My opinion is, the council could decide, is well within its code to continue to charge, or to start charging for garbage collection.
I'm going to, let me pray the devil, I have to get on this one. So, like, when, I'm trying to look and see when this code was written. So, like, what happens, I'm just hypothetically, we change the code on a residential house, and all of a sudden, all these houses that built before don't fit the code?
Their grandfather didn't enter the code.
Okay, so.
They're legal non-conforming, meaning that they continue to operate the way they are unless the, trying to remember what our codes, if it's destroyed or by up to a certain percentage, they've got to bring it back to the code.
Okay.
Or if it's no longer used for that particular purpose, it has to come back to the code.
So, why, why wouldn't this be grandfathered in if our code was written after you got this letter?
Well, but I, what does grand, I'm not sure what, this is a delinquent account. What?
The letter does not say that he does not have to pay, because he's Richard Nosson, it just says. In Doug's scenario, it will be on how you interpret this letter, and I interpret this letter being sent out to a delinquent account, that they're suspending their service until the account's brought up to date, and for whatever reason, that I can't speak to, because I was not here 25 years ago, it got lost in the shuffle and he was never charged again.
That's my suspicion.
They went, they never paid it, they go against my taxes.
Yep.
No, I believe that you paid it. I just believe they never added the garbage back on after they suspended it.
Never was, never.
Mr. Nosson, you received this letter and it references chapter 106.06, article 3, talking about delinquent accounts. Did you bring this back to the attention of the city council and ask them why they're referencing delinquent accounts when you in fact were not delinquent?
I agree.
Did you talk to anybody in the city?
We talked, I was at the city council at that time, about the yard board, the bomb open, damn it, I knew all those pretty well, I was a little, I knew the population, it was personally, obviously, the mayor at the time, we kept training them all.
Who's the city clerk?
Lynette Boba is who the letter came from.
Melinda Greer in the corner is what it's, for the city clerk.
Do you guys have any thoughts?
My question, you know, 25 years, you got it all up to the grandfathered in?
But this isn't a code change.
No, I mean, in the, yeah.
This is just, this is somebody, and I have to admit, I don't like the word you gave it. I don't like the, you will no longer be charged with a garbage. But to me, you're suspended, your service is being suspended, which means you.
It's not terminated, it's suspended.
Not terminated, it's suspended. And it still references the delinquent account thing. I don't, with all due respect, Doug, I don't, I don't think it's the same as a code change for your grandfathered in. I think this is likely, Stephanie suggested this was a 25-year oversight on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
clerical error.
Yeah, I mean, I would speculate that some clerk at one time attempted to put you onto a garbage fee and, I don't know, somehow, somehow it got.
Never has.
I would say she suspended it and took it off of his bill, and it just never got put back on.
Yeah.
And now.
For 25 years, he's had the best deal in town.
We're changing things, yeah, for sure, yeah.
I never had garbage on the bill, this gentleman, last year. Yeah.
Well, we do have other people in town that took their garbage to their business dumpster or something like that, and didn't want to be charged either. To my notion, though, if we let one person or a few dozen people not pay for garbage pickup, that means the rest of us pay more. Yeah, I think we got to decide on today how we want to do it, not what may have been done, which isn't completely clear 25 years ago. I think it's just another cost, like paying property tax of living out of town.
And I think we already made that decision when Stephanie Nevens was in front of us and.
Yep.
And asked to opt, denied it.
Right.
The code says that persons in the city limits pay it. I see that you're barely in the city limits, but you're definitely in the city limits.
So, what you're telling me is that 25 years ago, the mayor and the county people told me I will no longer have garbage, can never have it, was a lie.
A mistake was made of some kind. That's, I guess, that's all I think any of us can guess.
And I would be cautious if somebody ever told me that I could never do or have something, I would be cautious to ever listen to that unless I did definitely have it in writing, because never's a really, really long time.
Yeah, please.
And lots of changes happen.
The present council isn't bound by what was done 25 years ago, basically. We can make our own decision today in today's environment. And I think, taking your own garbage to the landfill, you figured all your expenses.
My thing, there wasn't yards per se. I got a big backyard, I feed lots of herds, with rats and stuff.
And we are trying to get people not to store their garbage in their benches. That can be a nuisance too, of attracting varmints and wild animals.
Yeah, I don't have that much, birds don't eat it a day.
Yeah.
All right, we need to move on. I have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
So, we need to move on, as if there was a motion.
Well, I would move that he follows the code as, just like every other resident of the city of Lisbon.
And I think that's already in place.
Yeah.
He's already getting billed now according to the code.
Right, right.
So.
I got a second.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, what's the name?
Can I ask one more question then, please?
Yep.
This monster, things that I've got, I couldn't go out in here.
Which, you got the, obviously, you got the recycling one, the big recycling one that everybody got, that everybody got.
I got a letter from the city requesting size wise.
Yep.
I never had it, so I didn't bother about it.
I think, Rick, I mean, if you didn't fill it out before, you're going to automatically get the big ones. But I think, I think we got like a month and a half to decide.
Sixty days.
Sixty days for, if you want to go to the smaller one, every other week.
That'd be cheaper.
Yeah, you would pick the smallest.
The people that didn't fill it out, sent the letter back in, automatically got the big one. So, I mean, you got 60 days to come in and say, all right, I need the smaller one every other week.
Connie, if you think that, if you're excited, take there you go.
You currently already got the 65, didn't you?
I got one of them.
It'll be sometime in July before they switch it out.
And then there's, if, you know, when they're.
Yeah, those.
I don't like that setting up front of the house.
Yeah, it'll be sometime in the, toward the middle of July before they have to switch them out.
Okay, I know what you're looking for.
Okay, sure will.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of downtown rehabilitation grant for escape room and nickel. Approval of downtown rehabilitation grant for escape room in Nick Walton.
They have submitted all the paperwork and proof that the projects were paid for, so they're ready for reimbursement at this time.
I'll move to approve.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion is second. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action, request of budget blinds for TIF rebate and tax abatement. And I can't, I can't see it on my computer, Kenny, because my computer won't download it.
The sheet that, well, last time we met, we, I had offered them a five-year at 70%, and they had come back requesting a 10-year at 70%. And at that time, you guys did not approve the 10-year, but made this offer to them for a 10-year at a sliding scale. So, the first year would be at 100%, then 90, 80, 70, 60, down to 10%. So, I sent that out to John and to Terry for review, and I thought they were going to be here tonight. Are you here representing them, or? Nope.
Cheryl's kinda hoping to see him, too.
So, I did send it to them, I let them know that it would be on, I went back and forth through emails with Terry, I was assuming he would be here tonight, but I have no clue.
All right, well, what we can do is, we could say yes or nay, either way, and let them know how we, when they do decide if the, yes or nay for them, let them know how we voted. So, I have a motion.
I'll move to offer them the 10-year at a declining scale from 100% down to 10%.
Your motion, and I'll second that. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
All righty. Approval of partial pay estimate number four to WRH Incorporated in the amount of $17,100 for wastewater treatment plant improvements and UV disinfectant.
This is the project that is going on right now at the sewer plant itself. And I think they're at a point where they're breaking for a while.
Yeah, they're, we're waiting for the skimmers to be made. So, they're, everything, they're actually ahead of schedule, it's just now we're waiting on the parts, so this is, everything they're asked for has been completed for the paid schedule.
Okay, any motion for that?
So moved to approve it.
Stephanie, you got a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, aye. Approval certificate of completion for Washington Street Intersection Improvement.
This project is complete, and Dave has recommended to go ahead and complete the project.
Any motion?
Second, motion.
I'll second it. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Approval of purchase of equipment for new police vehicle from Raycom in the amount
Ricky is here, if you have any questions. We did approve the purchase of a new police vehicle at the last meeting. This would be done in fiscal year 19, and this purchase here to supply the car with what it needs would be in fiscal year 19 also. So, he wants to get it ordered now, and then we'll pay for the next budget.
I was hoping that was what the car was.
The car was?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Doug, aye.
John? Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
By, authorizing mayor to sign renewal with EBS for partial self-funding of health insurance.
We are continuing to stay with the program that we have with insurance this year, and to have EBS take care of our partial self-funding. Just so you know, our insurance did go up 16% this year, which was quite a big jump, but I checked with Mount Vernon and several other cities, who all have Wilmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they went up all over the place. So, Mount Vernon's went up just as high as ours did. So, I do have our agent looking at another option, they have an option with the league that has come up, but unfortunately, the timeframe, we didn't, weren't able to get enough information to make a decision, we had to go ahead and renew, so that's it.
Any motion?
So moved.
John, you got a second?
Second.
Second by Stephanie. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, aye. Jay, approval of purchase of lawnmower from Lisbon Community School.
I'll let Travis take this one.
So, we were approached, the school has a 2016 X1 mower with a bagger on it. They don't use the bagger, and they deem that it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a $3,000, $3,500 piece of equipment just sitting there, just to use a mower part. So, they asked if we were interested in purchasing that from them. And I said that we weren't, we didn't budget for it. I talked with Drayton and asked him how much he would appreciate or use a bagger, and he says that he could use it quite a bit, especially in City Park, as fast as that grows. I mean, you could mow it on Monday, and we get four days of rain, and you need to be out there with a lawn sweep, sweeping it up after you mow it.
Is this the purchase of the whole mower, including the bagger, or just the bagger?
Yeah, the whole mower and the bagger for, for the $8,000. We've both, Rod and myself, have talked to Tom Light, because it's a hustler, to ask him what he thought it was worth. He said $8,000 to $8,500. I talked to Rod tonight to ask him, you know, if you guys approved the $8,000, if you thought the school would. And he says that he would check with them on Wednesday with their, their meeting. This is just to feel you guys out, if you guys want to do this or not. I have no idea where the money's gonna come from, so that's-
Do you have any idea?
Like, 75. Yes, we have, we have just shy of 1,200 hours on ours. It's starting to push a little smoke. I mean, our hope was to budget for it next year. 15 to 1,800 hours is the life expectancy on those Kawasaki engines. We got ours in 2012, used it and abused it. I mean, it's a, it's a commercial mower, and we've taken it places where we should've had four-wheel drive tractors mowing for some of these lots.
It would be good at some points to actually have two mowers, because there are times where the maintenance guys are waiting because Drayton's on the mower, or vice versa. So, it would be, I mean, we were planning on spending the money to purchase one, maybe not this next year, but the year after, but since this opportunity came up where we could get it at a reduced price, we thought we'd bring it to your attention.
Yeah, what's a new one to compare?
To compare your '12 to '14.
Wow.
This one has, and it's the, I call it the older style, but it's the better style. Each, each drive motor, it has the two individual drive motors for the wheels, instead of the newer style has the one. They're not really sold on those. I mean, this is almost identical to what we have, except for a side discharge, and it's got a bagger.
So, where would we fund it from, if?
It'd have to, it'd probably split between park and maybe just the roads or general funds, because of, we do the ditches and all that kind of stuff, so I could, I could kind of look at that amount, that amount of money, somewhere in the budget.
I move to approve the purchase of that mower.
How much you want to go?
The $8,000.
Any motion for approval of the mower up to $8,000, I have a second?
I'll second, I hate to miss this opportunity.
Second by Nate. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Just remember this budget tag.
We'll find out.
The work's wrecked.
Don't quit using-
We'll find out, Wednesday, he'll, he'll present it to their board, and go from there. I mean, something on this line, also, we gotta think about when we take over Highway 30, we gotta figure out how we're gonna mow those ditches, too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just, something can come up sooner or later. All right, moving on, 6A, discussion, discussion and possible approval of third and final reading of ordinance 052018, revising chapter 106.5 disposal requirements.
Make a motion to approve the third and final reading.
I got a motion by Stephanie, I got a second.
I'll second.
Second by Nate. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, aye. Public hearing on proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan in disperment, 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 whatever, agreement, and to borrow money there under, in a principal amount, not to exceed $700,000.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, aye. In public hearing, anybody got anything to say? Johnny?
This is just a formality that we have to go through in order to borrow the money. It looks like it would probably be around $658,000, but we're leaving in that not to exceed $700,000, just to cover the costs. So, this would be for the part of the, that we're gonna finance through the SRF loan, the rest will come out of the $500,000 grant that we were able to get.
Okay.
Make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion by Stephanie?
Second.
Second by Nate. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Resolution 412018, authorizing and approval of loan dispersment agreement, and providing for insurance, what's that word?
Insurants.
Insurance, and securing $6,000, $658,000 sewer revenue bond series 2018.
So moved.
Move by Nate?
Second.
Second by Travis. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Resolution 422018, adopting and appointing tax compliance procedures relating to tax-exent bonds.
This is just another formality that we have to go through in order to get the SRF loan.
Any motion?
I'll move.
Second by Travis. Second?
Second.
Second by Steph. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
That's what you guys heard, didn't I?
Such a trickster.
6E, authorization of mayor to sign purchase agreement with Myers-Meadows for parcel of land to access future sports complex.
We have finally finished all the paperwork that we've needed to do. Mark has wrapped it up, a purchase agreement with Myers-Meadows to purchase the two parcels that will allow us access into our sports complex once it's built. They have signed it, Myers-Meadows has signed it, and it just needs to be signed by the mayor.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Doug, aye. Sorry.
Tricked yourself, didn't you?
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Like, what the hell's he waiting for? Resolution 3622, appointment to library board.
These are two positions that are currently held, and they're up for renewal, and they have both agreed to serve for six more years on the library board.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate?
Second.
Second by John. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
I'm gonna go in order now, so I don't- All right, resolution 372018, appointment of board of adjustment.
We have really been struggling to fill that position, but I did talk to Joe Nelson, and since he's got a little more free time, since he's not on the council, he's agreed to take that position until we can find someone else to, to serve on the board, so.
So forever, then?
So forever, yeah.
Forever.
Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate, second.
Second.
By Stephanie. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Resolution 382018, appointing board members to the historical center board.
And they have made their appointments, and they have asked for council's approval.
Move to approve.
Move by John, second by Doug. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
deploy review, discussable and possible approval of contract, possible closed session per Iowa code 21.5. Rick, is it all right if we, we got like two other things to do before this? Is it all right if we go on to that, come back to it? Resolution 402018, setting salaries for fiscal year 19.
We would have to wait on that one till after Rick's contract, because he is included in that.
We'll do that when we get out of that, then. Resolution 432018, approval of transfer of funds.
This would be, we approve the payment for the downtown rehab grants, so this would be to transfer the money from TIF over to that fund, to clear out that account, and the total would be $12,484.79.
I'll move to approve.
Move by Travis.
Second.
Second by John. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
New business. Discussion and possible referral of fence ordinance revisions to planning and zoning.
We had, we've been having some issues come up with the fence permits. Right now, anybody who wants to put up a fence that lives on a corner lot, has to go in at either 15 or 20 feet on the side that faces a street, which really takes up the whole side yard. I think the purpose of this was for visibility in the past, and people were putting up privacy fences, or the, the white plastic fence, but we found that when you put up a chain-link fence, and there's, you can see right through it, it really doesn't cause the same problem as a privacy fence. So, we were looking at the possibility of changing that ordinance to allow them to put it about a foot from the sidewalk on the side, as long as it's a see-through fence. So, I was just wanting to know if you guys would like to refer this to the planning and zoning for discussion.
I would. Second.
Well, I wanna talk about it. Well, I wanna talk about, I mean, I can just see somebody plan the small brush, bushes there, and then all of a sudden, when they're 10 years down the road, they're big bushes, and you say, well, you proved them before.
Yeah, but this is a fence, not a bush.
It would have to be so much, so much of a percentage.
I mean, if it's a fence or a bush, it don't matter, it's a border.
Doesn't a fence have to be from like, the back of the house, backward anyway? So, I don't know how it would obstruct view of a corner.
If it was a, well, a lot of times it, it does though, if it's a, a private, I mean, if it's a solid wood fence.
I mean, if there's a house, and there's a 20-foot front yard, and, I mean, it could be 30, 40 feet from the corner before it would even start.
And P&amp;Z would just be a recommend, recommending board, so whatever we discuss, they would come back with a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd like to see a visual, so if, if it can go to the board, and they can.
First by Travis, didn't I?
Correct.
What's that?
He made a motion.
Yeah, I asked.
I believe John's second.
Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug, aye. Discussable and possible referral, referral of outdoor service areas to planning and zoning.
We did talk about this a little bit at the last meeting, and I did check with other cities. I'm having a difficult time finding cities that actually have it in their code. The city of Sheweville did have a good model to follow, but I think at this time, since it is an ordinance change, we would need to refer it to P&amp;Z for discussion, and have them look into it, and then come back to you guys with a recommendation.
Okay. I need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Stephanie, second by Doug. Doug, aye. John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Correspondence.
What was that?
Correspondence.
Oh, I don't have any.
City engineer report.
Dave is not here tonight, so I'm not sure. I didn't hear from him.
Okay.
Oh, the one correspondence I did have, I'm sorry. I just gave you guys a copy of an email from the DOT. When we talked about the alley next to Whitey's a year or so ago, and Dave came up with a plan for about $80,000 that we decided not to do at that time, I didn't let it go. I continued to work and contact the DOT, and pushed and pushed. I met with three of the bigwigs from DOT one day, and got, they got back to me finally, and they approved a U-step grant that Dave and I prepared. So that grant will pay for 55% of the project. So we're not going to include paving the alley, which knocked the project down from 80 to about 50,000. So, well, I'll have more later, and we'll approve the project as it goes. But I just wanted you guys to let, to let you know that we will be hopefully moving forward with that project. And I have talked with Whitey's, because we will have to get easements from them, and they'll have to participate in that a little bit, so they're on board also. So I'll be bringing that back to you guys. But I just wanted you to know, we did get the, the grant for 55% of it.
Good job.
Okay.
Very good job.
Public work director report.
I'm gonna talk a little bit after county talks, about the fire chief's report, but I just wanna thank everybody who worked the cleanup days, and it's pretty good, pretty good success, I think, from what I've heard from the employees, so.
I seen somebody drop some stuff off at school over there.
We got it today.
Mine, Christine, and she was on the phone, so.
Yep.
All right, police chief's report. Since he's not here, St, or Amy, you gotta do it? Fire chief's report.
Brandon couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted me to let you know a few things about the truck, and I think Danny was explaining it to you guys before the meeting started, so I'll probably just let him explain it again.
We got issues.
He does it better. I said, you, you explain it better than I do.
Basically, from the, the, it's happened before, but I caught it years ago, and had it before it all fell apart. But what happened was, behind the pump, to the rear drive shaft, there's like, four bolts that bolt these together, that twisted. When it twisted, it took the mer, they have no parts in right now, and it broke all the linkages, and everything went twisted. The problem is, the pump is so, it's so old that they're not sure they even have the parts for it. They're gonna have to make them. Now, Darby's been looking for them since last Thursday, and they haven't found a part yet. The problem is, if we do find the parts, it could take three or four weeks to get them or to make them. So I called, called the manufacturer that, and Farley that built the truck. They'll look at it, repair it, but we gotta get it to Farley. It's gotta be towed. I think the last time I towed a truck back to Dad and bought it was like, five, $700. So, that's just to get it there, to tell us, we've got, I had another repair service come down. I mean, we know what's wrong. I'm gonna guess we're gonna have 1,500 to 2,000 fixed it. The downside to that is, it's, I don't know if Travis wants to do it, I mean, it makes matters to me. If he wants it, all this will come off, be guarded generally. If he wants to make a flatbed, I mean, whatever. Unless you use it as a fire truck, all this is just guarded generally. So.
When does the new truck come?
We're hoping middle of August.
September 1st.
Yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping. Now, Brandon's supposed to get a hold of them, but it's, their truck isn't head-scanal. But, so we're hoping we can have it before September. But, and the downside of not fixing it is, you got one pumper, something to go wrong with that. You know, Brandon right now, Mount Vernon's just being paged for a requirement with, it's automated, right? So, we're gonna try to use our, the tanker for emergency situations, but that's only 350 gallon pump, so you can't spray a lot of water with it, but it will get us by until, until, until the water gets here. So, I mean, that's something to think about, you know, if the other truck goes down, we could have an issue, you know? It's kind of, it's kind of the problem of running these trucks until they get 30 years old. So, I don't, you know, I don't know what you guys want to do with it, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to stick money, and if you imagine by re-purposed the truck, unless you have to resell it as a fire truck. That would be the only reason I could suggest you guys fixing it, is if you were gonna try to resell it as a fire truck. I mean, there's plenty of communities out here that have just one pumper. Like I said, we share a street sign with the neighboring community, who Danny says gets paged out right away. I don't think you guys should feel like it's an injustice not to fix it. But if you do fix it, like Danny said, we're, if we were gonna use this for anything, all this, all the money you put in, we're just gonna rip off and scrap. So, I got some, some rough estimates, and Connie and I, as you guys know, have been looking for, for a dump truck for a while. If we were to outfit this as our chipper and slash leaf truck, and put a blade on it, just to get us by through this winter, because we're not eligible until next spring for that grant again.
In March again, we could apply for that grant.
We were gonna be in that 19,000 to 20,000 range. But then we'd have a backup, you know, plow truck, when we did get our new dump truck. But it would have the hoist on it for chips and leaves. Now, that's an electric over hydraulic hoist, so it's not like it's a dump truck, where we can all rock with it all day, and have something. It's, it's a Band-Aid, and I want you guys to know, it's, it's something we need for brush and leaves, but it's not gonna be something that's gonna solve our, our dump truck issue. And another issue to start thinking about too, is that our other tanker, I just figured out, you know, that, that Moxon pump on that is 29 years old. I know, we were gonna, you know, that, you know, it's just something to start thinking about in the future.
Is this something we have to decide on now?
No.
No, it, it's just something you guys need to be aware of, you know? We don't really have prices to fix it as of right now, because we can't find the parts.
Okay.
But, it's something that, when we do find the parts, we're gonna need to probably make a decision, you know, fairly, fairly soon, you know?
I, I talked to Brandon, Monday or Tuesday, whatever day it was. He called me and told me what was wrong with the truck. And I basically, I told him, I said, get ahold of county, let them know to page out Mount Vernon, if you got a house fire, or do it right away, or get ahold of Mount Vernon, let them know. I just feel, I didn't see the use, I didn't feel there was any sense of spending any more money on that truck.
Yeah.
When we're getting, we're getting a new truck right away. I told Brandon to bring it down, get it back down here, strip off anything they needed off of it, that they wanted to keep, and pull the keys. I said, it's, I don't, I don't think we should put any money into it. And like Danny said, I mean, they might have to make the parts for this, so, I mean, you know, $2,000 is doing the end up. If we say fix it, it's gonna end up $5,000. I mean, so, I mean, that's.
The downside with this would be, something would happen, Wes breaks his truck, or you got a smacked government interstate, we need to get the truck, you know? At that time, you have.
They got a new one coming, we'll just take that one.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't think it's gonna fix it.
Yeah.
I think you guys got a good plan, so.
Yeah.
City engineer, or city administrator's report.
Just a few things. We met with the school last Wednesday, did a walk-through through the park. We're halfway through the season, a little bit over halfway, so we just wanted to touch base. We did talk about things that we've already done at the park, and a few things that still need to be done, so it was a good meeting. Garbage containers have all been delivered now. There are several people that got the 65-gallon containers that probably didn't want them, so they're gonna have to wait till mid-July before they can switch those out. We are having a 60-day grace period where they can switch them out at no charge, and go with a smaller one if they choose to. I kind of have decided, and I'm hoping it's okay with you guys, that we probably won't build a new rate in July. We will probably wait and build a new rate in August. My theory with that is, because Christina would have to spend days entering all the, from the new information into the computer system, the new billing for each resident, and I would hate for her to get them all in there, get them all entered, and then she gets, we had 200 and some people that didn't respond. So we get 200 and some calls, that she's gonna have to go back and spend the time to re-enter those. So I'm figuring if we give everybody a month to get going, they still get, bill the 850, but then in August bill that goes out, they'll get the new rate. I'm hoping everybody's okay with that. That's just my thinking, just a lot of extra work. It'll give everybody a break to switch in the 60-day grace period. See, they had some drain pipes at Southeastland that need to be repaired, so Travis is looking into getting somebody out there to get those taken care of. The outside of the building is our responsibility, the inside is theirs. We're running a little bit behind on maintenance issues here. Winter carried on a little longer. We've had several sinkholes. We've had a lot of rain, so we just want people to know in the community that we're still planning on painting the lines downtown, and we're still planning on putting rock in the alleys. We just are a little bit behind right now, and we're hoping to catch up soon. So, that's all I have.
Do we ever think, I know, a couple times I've heard people talk about it, but have we ever thought about maybe at some point discussing the fourth maintenance person?
We think about it daily.
Dream about it.
Dream about it. Every time I think that, I find the, a way to do it, it seems like we have a, some, some major expense that comes up, like the fire truck, or anything else. But I still think it's something we need to look into. I'm not sure, I think we need to take a, a look at some of the other positions, because I'm not sure how much we actually are gonna need a planning and zoning administrator. I mean, we still need one, but is that something maybe a fourth maintenance guy can do, since now all we're gonna be doing is the setback inspections? And so, it's, it's something that we probably need to take a look at somewhere in the near future.
And I will say, from having just gone through that building permit process, we had to get two different permits, I think it was. And, not, no offense to anybody, I'm not knocking anybody or anything like that, but when, when they came to our house to tell us what we had to do, that was very different than what the county actually told us that we had to do for the permit. So it was very confusing. And I think the, if we're, if we chose to go with the county, and we did choose to go with the county, I think we should probably let them handle as much of it as they're willing to handle, because it was just too much back and forth. One said this way, one said that way, and it was really, quite honestly, a pain. And so I think we should probably look at that.
Yeah, a lot of the questions that come into the city hall come during the day, so I end up dealing with a lot of that, because our zoning administrator doesn't keep regular hours. So, the other part of it is going out after they stake it out, and measuring to make sure you meet the setbacks. So that is something that, that person is doing, but in the future, it could be something that maybe the maintenance, we could put in the maintenance guys' job duties, and have that fourth person help with that. It's just something we need to look into. Try to organize our positions to make sure we're getting the best for our buck.
So what does that look like? Does that look like a council meeting discussion? Does that look like an extra work session? What does that look like, how we start that process?
Well, I thought maybe it'd be a good idea just to do a planning, have a planning session, because it sounds like, just, that's not the only thing that we're thinking about. There are several things that perhaps we could just have a, you know, a session and, and do some planning, kind of, for the next fiscal year, and see what we wanted to do.
Because we're all, we're probably gonna have to consider in the next two to three years too, when we have a new sports complex.
Yeah.
We're probably gonna have to have a full-time parking rec director, so. It's something that we're probably, I think a work session would be a good idea, because it's not just one position we're looking at, where it's gonna affect several positions.
Put that on the next agenda. Set the date for a work session.
All right.
Mayor's report. She's doing good. She's getting better. She's got the executive suite out of the, there's a nursing home, she says.
It's a nice big one.
It's a big room.
We could all fit in there.
She's doing better. Council reports. Travis?
I don't have anything right now.
Nate?
I don't have any new news to report either.
I'm good.
Starcraft Day Committee is gonna be meeting tomorrow, the 26th, at 7 o'clock at Gwen's, and they'll start having more frequent meetings from the middle of July onward, if we're interested in getting involved there. Heritage Hall has some Celtic music. It's a free program. 7 o'clock on the 27th. And thanks to all those people that are serving on boards for the city, and thanks for the cleanup crew. They did another great job. That's all I have.
So I was gonna say, just thanks to people that helped with the cleanup. I'm sure Christine will have a report on what went on for there, but that's a good, that's, they should be proud. That's a very good thing that the city does for these citizens, I mean.
She did say she's never seen so many big TVs in her life thus this year.
I saw that too in my apartment. I didn't wanna let, I didn't wanna carry them down the stairs, and neither the boys are there, so.
There's always next year.
Yeah, that's what I figured. They've been there for two years.
That's what I said, last year. And there was, I was like, no, get, go.
And it worked out good, because my TV went out Friday down at the bar, so I got rid of it. All right, let's move back to 6I, employee review discussions and possible